Thank you, everyone. It's six o'clock, so I'd like to begin this business meeting at Urbana School District 116. Roll call, please.
Member Hickson?
Here.
Member Amarabu?
Here.
Member Jones?
Here.
Member Langendorf here.
Vice President Baxley?
Here.
President Palowski?
Here. Are there any additions, corrections, or modifications to tonight's agenda? No? Okay. There is no call for an executive session after tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now it's time for accommodations, recognitions. First up is district student artwork presentation and elementary fine arts.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you for having us. My name is Cara Murese. I'm the elementary fine arts coordinator, and this is one of my favorite nights of the year. This is a tradition I'm very honored to be a part of. In Urbana, we focus on process over product, and this allows us to really delve deep into concepts and give us a rich arts experience to our students. But it's always great to show the progress along the way, and so tonight, we have a few things we're going to show for you. And the first is a short tap performance by some of Ms. Kinnaman's fifth graders.
Hi, my name is Maggie Kinnaman. I teach dance and drama at Lille School. And I've been working with this Ms. Mattson's fifth grade class for, gosh, we've been working on this dance for about three weeks now, and we just finished it today. So we do have a little bit of a cheat sheet here to help us remember, but they've been enjoying tap so much, and they've learned about how dances are structured. They're able to read this and understand the form of the dance. So they're learning a lot of really great skills through this process, and I'm so happy they were able to come tonight. So we'll... You guys ready?
Yeah.
Alright. Oh, that's not it. Sorry. Wrong side. Nope, that's not it. That's wrong. Great job. I'm so proud of you. I should mention that the Lille School PTA, I wrote a grant for the tap shoes and the flooring, and they provided us with that. So it's something special the fifth graders get to do in dance every year. Michaela, raise your hand. Say hi. Pippi, raise your hand, say hi. Lydia, raise your hand, say hi. Paco and Liam, thank you guys so much for coming tonight.
Thank you so much. I'll also mention that we have a district set of tap shoes and flooring as well that the other dance and drama teachers are able to share, so tap is happening all over the district. And now we're going to present the visual artwork from different students throughout the district, so if my art teachers could come forward. Hello. Oh, did I press this? Okay, so we're going to present some artwork that we've created. First, we've got Cara from Lille School. She is a kindergartner, and she's going to hold the picture. And this picture is inspired by the work of Vincent Van Gogh. We learned how to stamp, how to paint, how to cut, how to glue, and this is our big kindergarten project.
Hello. I'm Ms. Tavis, and I'm the art teacher at Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s Elementary School. And this is Darshana Koyralla, and she's in the third grade in Ms. White's class. And the third graders this year, we did some weavings. So I just love Darshanas. I mean, they all turned out really great.
Here from DPW, we have Kalen.
Okay, thank you. Hannah's not here? This is from Yankee Ridge. Yes, thank you. This last one is by Priscilla Jefferson from Thomas Paine, second grade. And as always, we're so grateful to international galleries for doing such a beautiful job framing the artwork. We have one more short thing for you. For 34 years, you've supported the Fine Arts Program in Urbana, and it just keeps getting better and stronger. This year, we had not only a team in a rebuilding, which only took 33 years, but we did it. And we also added a fifth day of fine arts, which has given our students 15 more hours of fine arts experiences every year. And that is incredible, and we don't take that for granted. We have even bigger goals going forward. With the opening of the sixth grade center, we have a long-term goal to get an elementary choir in every elementary school so that we could feed even more singers to the sixth grade center and on to the middle and high school. And we want to keep expanding our partnerships with the University of Illinois, Cranert Center, the CU Schools Foundation, and schools in Champaign. We've had a great year, and I would like to thank all of our fine arts teachers for their hard work and dedication to our students. If they could please stand, our fine arts teachers that are here tonight. And we have just a short video of your students telling what they love about fine arts.
I love music class because I get to learn new things about music.
I like music class because I can sing.
In dance and drama, like in dance, we're doing all types of stuff. We're doing exercises. We're going to learn new things. And in drama, you can act like you're an actress.
Why I like art classes is because we do fun projects.
The reason why I like art is because I like you, and I like painting.
Dancing drama is so fun because security lets us be creative.
Dancing drama is so fun because we get to act out.
Dancing drama is so fun because we get to dance.
Dancing drama is so fun that we get to play.
Hi, my name is Riley, and I like music class because make me stuck on that.
I like visual art because in the future, if your job has anything to do with art, you can use all the strategies that you learn to help you with your job.
Dance and drama are important because you can be a singer, a teacher, or a dancer.
The art is so important because art is in order to be behind everything.
I like art because we get to do coloring, paint, water painting, and clay, and it's just the best thing I can ever do.
Well, my favorite thing is we do these warm-ups. We bounce.
How do you do it? Show me. What do you move first?
First thing you do, you go up.
And then what do you do?
I think art is helpful because you can use stuff at home, such as cereal boxes and popsicle sticks. I also believe that it calms people down.
And art can be something that can calm down your emotions, and like, if you're sad or crying or something, you can go crochet something or draw something.
And art will help you calm down if you want to draw.
In music here at DPW, we learn many things.
How to play the guitar.
How to play the xylophone.
How to play the ukulele.
And how to sing.
Singing in the choir where our time is spent learning. Yay, yay, it's time for music class.
Thank you so much.
That was awesome. Thank you. Next up is the state seal of bi-literacy presentation.
Good evening. Should we take a moment and let folks who are leaving move on before we start?
Yep.
Yeah, you're welcome to leave. If you were here for fine arts only, you're welcome to leave at this time. You're welcome to stay, too.
Thanks, Joe.
Okay, good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Joe Wiemelt, the Executive Director of Secondary Multilingual and Alternative Education for the school district. Originally, my colleague Hillary Allen was going to present this evening, but she came down sick and was not able to be here this evening. And my previous conflict or commitment also was canceled, so I'm able to be here tonight. Fortunately, this is one of my favorite presentations as well. So I'm presenting on behalf of our secondary team, our high school team in particular, about the state seal of bi-literacy and the number of students who have qualified to earn either the commendation towards bi-literacy or the seal of bi-literacy for the state of Illinois. And so I will proceed. So as a reminder, and if you're new to the seal of bi-literacy, here's a real quick overview. So in Illinois and the majority of the states across the country, there's a process where students can be acknowledged as receiving the state seal of bi-literacy based on proficiency in two or more languages, English and another language. And so this is across the four language domains of speaking, listening, reading, and writing, and must be done, of course, in two or more languages. If a student qualifies and meets the requirements for the seal of bi-literacy, then they receive a seal designated on their diploma as well as a seal on their transcript when they send that transcript on to college or other places. And so it is acknowledged across the entire state of Illinois for any public university, and most private universities also acknowledge and accept the seal of bi-literacy, as well as I believe it's over 40 different states also now acknowledge and participate in the seal of bi-literacy across the country. So the commendation, you'll hear both seal of bi-literacy and the commendation toward bi-literacy. The commendation basically talks about a student who is reaching proficiency. They just haven't quite reached it yet. So typically, they have to score at an intermediate level in either English and/or the other language, but have not reached that full bi-literacy yet. But it does acknowledge that they're on their pathway towards bi-literacy, and some universities acknowledge the commendation, provide college credit as well, which I'll get to more in just a moment. Just a real quick snapshot of numbers. So when we talk about students earning the seal of bi-literacy, we just like to paint the picture of where we started and where we are currently. So in 2021, that was the first year of us offering the process to earn the seal of bi-literacy. I think Illinois, it started that year or maybe the year prior, right around COVID, of course. So we officially started at Urbana High School, Urbana School District in 2021. And at that time, 12 students earned the seal and five students earned the commendation. And as, fast forward to last year, which was our largest year to record, we had 25 students earn the seal and 14 students earn the commendation. And then it's exciting to see that this year, we've had 39 students earn the full seal of bi-literacy and 12 students earn the commendation. 26 out of 51 of those students were in the dual-language program. And the reason why we're emphasizing the dual-language program in this process, especially tonight, is this senior class is the very first kindergarten class that ever started in the dual-language program. So we want to acknowledge the long journey that our students and families have been on in regards to their pathway towards bi-literacy and acknowledge that as we move forward this evening. So again, there's that data as well, and we have a special congratulations to a few students that earned the seal in more than one language and/or commendation in one language and the seal in the other. Gabe Desard, who I don't believe is here this evening, is a linguist in the making, a multilingual linguist in the making, as you can see. He earned the full seal of bi-literacy in English with German, French, and Mandarin Chinese, which I think earns a round of applause for an 18-year-old. That is very rare to be quadrilingual, and he says that he's working on a fifth language as well. He is one of those students that just kind of soaks up language. He is also going to Columbia University in the fall, coming out of Urbana, which is definitely something to celebrate. We also have Sitlali Cortez Alvarez, who earned, round of applause for her, who earned the seal of bi-literacy in Spanish and English, and then earned the commendation in French as well, which is nothing to be ashamed of and actually should be very much celebrated. Paulina Engrave, who was an ambassador last year, also the same thing, earned the seal in Spanish and English, the commendation in French. Carla Beltran Hernandez, I don't know if Carla, is Carla here this evening? Nope. She also earned the commendation in a third language, as well as Nina Weisler, who earned the seal in one language and commendation in another language. So it just speaks to the multilingualism of our community and the diversity of our community, which we always acknowledge and emphasizes our strength. So you may be wondering, okay, what exactly is the process for this? And so there are a few different ways a student can earn the seal of bi-literacy, and I'll talk about what comes with the seal in just a minute. And I'll talk about what comes with the seal in just a moment. Basically, you have to score at a certain level in English and another language, um, to earn the seal or the commendation. These two assessments that are listed here are the two that we use, uh, in Urbana and are acknowledged and approved by the state of Illinois. And these are for either English and/or the other language, the target language. So the stamp for S is the assessment that we administer in the fall for, uh, seniors who are retaking it or who didn't take it their junior year. And then the spring as well for juniors. Uh, we start the process of testing the formal assessments in their junior year, eleventh grade year. But students can also take the assessments their senior year and/or retake their assessment if they want to try again. Uh, to score at the, uh, to reach the level of the seal of bilinguacy, you have to score a six out of nine um, on this stamp for S assessment. So a nine would be considered like the perfect score, didn't miss any, any questions and, and perfect linguistic ability in that language. Six is considered intermediate high, which for all of the national and international standards is considered fluent in, in terms of comparing to a native speaker. Uh, the minimum score then for the commendation would be a four, which is kind of that intermediate level out of nine, so right in the middle. The equivalent to that is something that more people are familiar with is the AP examination process. So in order to score, you can also take the AP exam in Spanish or French or another language or English. And you have to score a four or higher, um, to earn credit towards the seal of bilinguacy, which also grants you credit, university credit on that AP exam, that AP class as well. And then of course, the three for the commendation. So you can see the expectations and rigor is very high, um, to, to reach the seal of bilinguacy. And students can take either or, or both, the stamp for S assessment that we administer locally and/or the AP exams, as well as the SAT, ACT, I'll skip over that, which is on the next slide. So this previous slide I showed you is usually done for the other languages, not English. But students can take the stamp for S in English and the AP English exam as well, and those scores would count if they score high enough. The majority of students though, for their English assessment, use one of the following, uh, one of the top three here. Either the access for ELLs, which is the English assessment given to students who are learning English as a second language that are participating typically in a multilingual program, dual language program, ESL program. And the four-point-eight overall score is what the state of Illinois considers proficient in English to, um, to become, no longer be categorized as an English language learner. So i- if you are in high school and you're still taking the access test and you score a four-point-eight on the composite, that would grant you the English portion of the seal of bilinguacy. Similarly, the three-point-five literacy score would be enough for the commendation. Also, the ACT, which is now our assessment that juniors take, again, in the state of Illinois, you have to score at least a twenty on the English Language Arts portion of the ACT to be able to qualify for the seal of bilinguacy. There's also the process of taking dual credit coursework. So we do offer dual credit English your twelfth grade year. So if a student scores a three-point-oh or above, which is a B or higher, then that grants the English portion of the seal of bilinguacy. And then the AP exam and the stamp for S, which we've already mentioned. So the expectations are very high to earn the seal of bilinguacy in two languages or more. Um, and, and that's why it's really very much a celebration to see that our numbers keep growing of students that are earning the seal of bilinguacy. So what are the benefits? All of, some of these are kind of no brainers. We all know the importance and the benefits of learning multiple, multiple languages and becoming bilingual. Um, I would say the one thing that's specific to the seal of bilinguacy that would be different is that you can earn college credit just by scoring high enough and getting the seal of bilinguacy. It varies from university to university. The state of Illinois requires that public universities offer credit for the seal of bilinguacy. They don't require how many credits that they offer. But, so for example, the University of Illinois right here in Urbana-Champaign offers eight college credits in that target language if you earn the seal of bilinguacy, which is the equivalent of two class levels, um, at the university. But other universities offer up to twelve credits. Um, there's a couple universities that offer a minor. You can start day one of college already with a minor in Spanish or French, whatever that language might be. So that academic and financial benefit is very tangible when we talk about what, what comes with the seal of bilinguacy. Um, and so that number of credits varies. It's linked on this slideshow. If you're interested or if the public's interested to know the university where a student may be going or wants to go, how many credits they can earn from the seal. So we'll jump straight into acknowledging our students. There are a few students who are here. I know Sitlali, of course, is here and a few other students in our audience. Um, and the students that are highlighted are students who have participated in our dual language program at some point in their K-12 experience, and that's why that's acknowledged there. So I'll just go down the list. If you're here and I read your name, if you don't mind just coming up to the table or coming around to the table, and we will, um, celebrate you with a picture at the end and a round of applause. So these are students who earned the seal of bilinguacy in Spanish and English. I'll just read names quickly. So Edgar Altamirano, Oscar Bamaca Montiel, Paulina Angrave, Maynor Antonio Antonio, Christian Antonio Diego, Hannah Bear Shapiro, Carla Beltran Hernandez, Catherine Calderon, Natasha Carmona, Sitlali Cortez Alvarez, Helen De La Cruz, Elizabeth Francisco Rivera, Maria Garcia Valades, Elizabeth Garcia, I believe she's here, Lillian Hall, Alexa Hernandez, Ruth Holtop, Jalen Johnson, Santiago Yeras, Larissa Lopez Felix, Alondra Martinez, Emiliano Orellala, Courtney Phillips Jr., Alicia Ramos, Eileen Rivas Lagos, Yadira Rodriguez, Mo Shear, Juana Sebastian Cano, Manuela Sebastian Juarez, Maria Sebastian Juarez, Samuel Sherwood, Alex Tartikovsky, Alexa Valades Ramirez, Isabel Valencia Ramirez. Those are our students in Spanish and English, and we'll give them a round of applause. Congratulations. Stay up here, stay up here. So I'll keep going with other languages. So in German, Matthew Bedoni, Gabriel Desard, Ethan Murphy, Isaiah Ross, Nina Weisler. Anybody here for German? Didn't think so. Um, for French, Gabriel Desard again, and for Chinese, Gabriel Desard again. So a round of applause for those students for the seal of bilinguacy. You may be seated, you can go back. Thank you. Our next slide is for the students who earned the commendation. Oh, you might have to come back, Sitlali? So for German, they've earned the, the commendation, which as a reminder is that intermediate level and does off, also sometimes come with college credit. So for German is Liam Carroll, Alexander Evans, Lucas Savathon, Oliver Shauerman, and Levi Walker. I'll keep going. For French, Paulina Angrave, Carla Beltran Hernandez, Jonathan Carr, Sitlali Cortez Alvarez, Anthony Han Fisher. And in Spanish, Melin Ramos Aleman and Nina Weisler. Round of applause for the commendation. The last thing I'll say this evening before I close is, um, I appreciate the support of our community and our board of education of emphasizing the importance of language learning, uh, whether that's in our ESL programs, multilingual programs, dual language programs, world language programs. As you can see, students can participate in the seal of bilinguacy and earn the seal of bilinguacy regardless of what classes they take. It's not based on what program you're in, but your ability to show proficiency in more than one language. And I, I love being a part of a school district that honors and affirms linguistic diversity and the strengths that come with that. So I appreciate the board of education and district administration for your support there. Um, I had one other thing I was going to mention, and now I'm blanking. So I will just close with that. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you all. Congratulations.
Questions? I forgot about questions.
Can we ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I was wondering, how many of the students who earned these awards were in our, um, just regular French, German, Spanish classes?
So, yeah, I would say-
So what were the, was it the other half? I mean, it's about half of them were in-
Yes, basically.
Okay. And so I'm wondering, as we look at next year, do you know, are they still thinking about, um, combining those upper level courses at the high school? Or have they figured out a way to still offer them? Because that would seem to me to be important.
Sure. I can't speak to that. I don't oversee world language, so I can't, I can't answer that question. So I'm unsure. I'm not sure if anyone else.
They're being offered, but are they being, they're not combined? Okay.
French is being combined, but not German.
And it has in the past.
And it has been for many years.
Okay.
That does remind me what my other thought was, was, um, when we, I appreciate that. When, uh, we typically start the assessment process, the ju- their junior year, and that coincides with the ACT, SAT as well. And this past junior year, so last year when Sitlali was a junior, we had over forty students testing for the seal of bilinguacy their junior year, which was a record number of students, um, attempting or, or taking the assessment. This year, we had over sixty students testing across junior and senior year. So they, we, we anticipate our numbers will keep growing even next year, which is exciting for all language learning programming in our district and beyond. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Joe, and congratulations. And again, if, if people would like to, to leave at this point, that would be fine. You, you're welcome to stay, but, um, you don't have to stay. Um, next up are our citizen statements. If anybody wishes to make a, a public statement before the board, there are golden rush sheets in the back of the room. They could fill out, hand it to our recording secretary, Lori Johnson. I haven't received any forms to, to date, so I'm calling once for citizen statements. Going twice. I know citizen statements this evening. Um, our student ambassadors report. Yeah, last one.
Anyway, you can go, okay. Um, so there have been a lot of the end of year banquet as we're wrapping up the school year. Um, and these are some of the ones I've attended, and it's just been really nice to be able to go and celebrate seniors and also like just all the accompaniment, accomplishments that our school does, uh, throughout different departments such as music and habitat and just everything that our students, um, are included in. And then music department, um, we had the Jazz Cafe. The band department's last concert of the year, and they're both really fun. Jazz Cafe was super snazzy and like dressed to the nines, um, and it was really nice. And then, uh, the last concert was just really nice, um, to be in as my final goodbye in that, uh, department, so yeah. Um, and I know this, uh, conversation has kind of ended for this year, but I still want to like bring it up because I still think that this is something that the students want. Um, to hopefully be able to do in the future, I was thinking if we could maybe set up a committee and the students would, um, submit designs like a month prior or something like that. Um, because I know a lot of students were disappointed that they couldn't decorate their caps this year. Um, and it's something, of course, that we have to like regulate because we can't just let students do whatever they want. But I was just hoping it could still be an open conversation, um, going forward. And then my last thing is the graduation ceremony, uh, is this Thursday, oops, I forgot to put that on there. Um, but it's this Thursday at the State Farm Center at six PM. It is free entering, but there is a parking, five-dollar parking fee, um, for anyone who wished to attend. Um, and then graduating seniors, do not forget graduation rehearsal is tomorrow at one-thirty, where you will not be able to walk the stage. So that is it for me. Thank you.
We'd love an opportunity now to recognize the fact that you guys worked really hard this past year to represent the student, uh, students at the high school with aplomb. You, you guys put together fantastic slideshows and presentations every week to let us know what's going on in the high school. And you ask great questions. I mean, every single time, you, you, you really use your voice to speak for those who don't have voices here normally, and we can't help. I just really want to take the opportunity to thank you for all of that.
Yes, we have a tangible recognition. Yeah, you're gonna come out on the call.
Sure.
So, um, we want to recognize Sitlali Albert Senior, who's graduating and going on. So we're proud of you. And Valentina, who is a junior, will be a senior next year for us. You can do even as you're looking for writing college essay and things, something you should use for college. Wow, out here, I was gonna invite our three. We have our three ambassadors for next year. So, um, our senior, Mia Schroder, is gonna be our senior next year representing the board and the president. Nadre Towns is, um, going to be a sophomore, and he is also gonna be a student ambassador. And then, uh, Sophia Shango Frey is going to be our alternate, and she is a junior next year. And the reason we have three is, as you can see, it comes this year.
It's time for board reports. If anybody wishes to make a state, a board report this evening, just, uh, let me know. Anyone?
It's been a busy May. There have been a lot of, as Sitlali said, a lot of music concerts. I was able to go to the Jazz Cafe. I have never seen the Commons decorated so elegantly. It was just really a lovely evening. And honors night was special because of a war that my daughter and I presented, but there were seventy-nine students who received some type of scholarship or, uh, award or acknowledgement. And, and that's like a third of the class, about a third of the class. So it was really wonderful to see. And so many of them received multiple ones. I think that there were several who, students who also got free rides to, uh, the university. So I'm very, very pleased to see their accomplishments. Uh, Ben and I had a, um, interesting visit at the Ready School this week and really enjoyed seeing where, um, students can go for a different learning opportunity. No, Ben wants to add anything about that, but they were very open for our visit and we enjoyed their tour and talking and seeing some of the students and, and staff. Um, tomorrow night is the adult ed, um, graduation, students who earned their high school diploma through the school, through the Urbana School District 116, and I think there are twenty-seven students, um, participating, and there were even more that graduated this year. So that's at the high school tomorrow at five-thirty, I believe. And then, um, Tiger Market had another one of those tasting opportunities, um, this afternoon for our lunch, during our lunch periods. Quest Foods came and made a macaroni bar. So they made the macaroni, and then we had all different options that they could add to the macaroni, um, to make it more nutritious and, and a different taste as well. So I appreciate, uh, the Quest Foods, Emily from Quest Foods, to, um, help us with that. And it was pretty tasty, so I, it was a good opportunity to learn and how to make different foods, so.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Sherry and I went, uh, went to Ready. And not knowing what to expect, I was really pleased with the facilities and the commitment to the students. And it gives me a, a broader sort of recommendation, I suppose, with, with, uh, you know, with our kids that we have to place in alternative schools. I'll be able to speak to, uh, to that, my opinion on that. It was very pleasant to go.
Yeah, they do a great job.
Yeah, they really do.
Anyone else?
Oh, I just want to say the honors, um, night was terrific. It was really great to see the kids and what they received. I mean, it was one for the books.
Our kids do good. Anyone else? Okay, um, administrative reports. Uh, now we're gonna get an update on our sixth grade center. So that's Scott Lockter and, from IGW.
So John, that, um, if you could project the costs and then we, and the construction. Perfect. Scott, you could do whichever one you want first. If you want to do the construction timeline or the cost.
This is up. We can start with that.
We can start with that.
Yeah. So if you remember, uh, we have a construction contingency, which is used for unforeseen items during construction or things that need to be changed during construction. And for this project, we were pretty comfortable after all the abatement and the preliminary demo- and the preliminary demo that had happened, so we actually reduced it to five percent. Usually we'd want to keep a little bit more than that on a remodel, but. So we had a million eighty-six thousand five hundred for our contingency. And to date, we've used two hundred, a little over two hundred and fifty thousand of that. So eight hundred and thirty-five, or yeah, eight hundred and thirty-five thousand remaining. So we're in good shape on that. I think we've talked about, you know, maybe the furniture equipment is a little more expensive than we thought. So we may be able to use some of that for, to make up that difference. Generally, we're in very good shape on contingency-wise, so. I don't know. Any questions on, any details on that? Okay. If you want to go over to the construction update. Project remains on schedule. And we're slated to turn the building over July thirtieth, 2025. I think the only, the only item the contractor has a little concern about is the finishing up the gym. Because we got to get the mechanical systems going, and then they got to bring in the wood and let it sit for a couple of weeks to acclimate before they start the install. Then they got to install it, finish it, and then they got to come back and do the bleachers. So that may be a little bit beyond that July thirtieth. You know, I think school starts August eighteenth, so we may be finishing up the gym pretty close to that.
Is that gonna interfere with like the city's inspections?
No, it would be, well, it would be ROE inspections. As long as we have the fire alarm and the sprinkler system and all of that ready to go. You know, finishing the wood floor wouldn't be an issue for occupancy. And then also as part of that, they've already seeded the northwest corner of the site. So we will have some outdoor space available. And we'll also have the old, the old gym available for PE, so. The new building addition is pretty well enclosed. They're still finishing up the brick on the outside, probably two, three weeks left on that. And then once we get all the masonry stuff out of the way, they'll start on finishing up the site work, putting in the little parking lot in front and the access drive. The existing building is really down to finishes and installing tack boards and chalkboards. And we're actually gonna turn over a portion of the existing building to bring in items that were stored, clean them up and organize them, particularly the library books, to get those all organized and ready to go into the library when that gets finished, so. And then the solar project is installed, and I think it's ready to be operated. And the main power is on to the building. Well drilling is still in, in progress for the geothermal system, but they've got a lot of the piping installed in the building, and our heat pumps for the geothermal are on site. So they're gonna be starting to install those in the classrooms here shortly. So right now, we don't see any big hangups other than that, that wood floor in the gym, so.
Okay, and then we had some pictures to go along with what Scott was sharing. And John, it's kind of in presentation mode, so if you want to pause at each, kind of pause it at each slide so Randy can talk about, or Scott can talk about the photos, would be great.
That's the front entrance that you just saw the rendering kind of showing that. Roof is on, but they don't have the metal around the edges or anything. That's the library. You can see the windows are in. They're starting painting the walls. And they'll be getting the ceiling in. Ceiling in the addition is, is started. So they'll be working their way around installing the ceiling grid. That's the library. Looking back, there's a little soffit there that is above the circulation desk. There's the gym and the stage view there. We've got a movable partition on the stage, so that space can be used for health classes up there. Lockers are being installed in the corridors. Each wing has its own color for the, and there'll be some accents elsewhere that pick up that same color scheme, like the restrooms. You see the tile, and we have an epoxy floor in the restrooms. So each, each restroom is kind of color-coded by the wings. Partitions are in, and they're just getting ready to start installing plumbing fixtures in those restrooms. That is a science lab and kind of a typical classroom view to the right. Starting to install countertops here shortly. Most of the casework is installed. You can see they're starting to install chalk, our whiteboards and tack boards. There's the science lab classroom again. That's the outside looking at the library. Just starting to install the metal roof on the library.
And we did get a mailbag question this week regarding the geothermal, all of the little tubes coming out. And so, yes, so that we will be getting.
Yeah, you can, they kind of make a little bit of a mess when they do it, but looks like there's a bunch of moles out there in the yard.
Are each of those little piles of anthills, are they part of the geothermal digging?
Yeah, that's where they drilled a well, goes down about three hundred feet. And they loop a tube, you know, down, and the fluid goes through that to dissipate the heat or pick up the heat, depending on season.
How many wells did they drill, Scott? I don't remember, was it seventy?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it, I think seventy or eighty, that's about right. It's a lot of them. It's taken them a few months to get them all drilled.
Well, whoever in our public who took the time to send a picture to Kathy for the mailbag, you can see probably about thirty or forty.
Yep.
In the photo that I saw, so.
Yeah, they're all kind of on that south side of the building.
Yeah.
This is looking at, you can see the library in the background and the gym. The stage kind of projects out there and canopy to the left. And that's looking at the entry canopy again.
Okay, I think that's it. John, I just sent you a solar video also that Randy was.
Oh yeah, that was nice. I saw that.
That was pretty cool. So we thought, we have it. We might as well show it. We just got it.
While you're looking, can I just say something? I'm so glad that you came and presented today because I know there have been worries, rumors, whatever, that the building won't be done on time, so I'm so grateful to hear, to hear that it will be. I keep telling people, I haven't heard anything different, you know. But so I'm glad to hear it, and I'm glad it's going out on television tonight.
And it's hard to tell sometimes when you just drive by the building because it doesn't look like it's finished, but it's not, but we're getting there.
Imani and I met with the fifth grade teachers yesterday to talk about, we have kind of this transition meeting where we wanted to hear what their questions were and what were the questions they were hearing from parents, and that was the main question that they were hearing from parents, is the building gonna be ready? Will they be able to get into the building? And so we are planning a ribbon cutting day, and we'll also, of course, have a day. Imani would like to, Ms. Carr would like to have a day just for the families, and then a day for just, for the public. So we can invite the public in, but then she wants to have a separate day for incoming families and students. So we'll set those dates very soon and be sharing them as well.
Thanks for sharing that. That was pretty cool. Anyone else have any questions or?
We have a, one more update around staffing, but if you have any more questions for the facilities piece, for Randy or Scott, or I know Randy was gonna talk about cleaning costs. That was a question we received because cleaning, the cleaning costs weren't determined last May when we had our discussion around FTE and costs. So I don't know, Randy, if you want to do cleaning now, that might be easy.
The. Sorry, wasn't prepared for that.
While we're waiting, I just wanted to say that we're all really anxious to see it and hope that we can get in there soon, whenever it's safe, so we can see some of these things in person. It's very impressive, and it's something that I think our district is going to be very proud of.
Yeah, I think we could certainly arrange a tour for board members if they would like, or. Well, we, like as Jennifer said, we'll have a ribbon cutting ceremony.
Oh, yeah.
In August, I'm sure.
I want to make a comment, just thinking back to the year nineteen eighty-nine, when I was a freshman and we went to the high school, a brand-new high school. And looking at the photos of the progress makes me sort of reckon, you know, hearken back to those days. My son's gonna be going, his first, he'll be the first cohort there. So it's just, it's feel-good. It feels good to have them going into a brand-new building and make it sort of be the first, first class. It's good. Yeah, it's a good feeling. Yeah?
So I know in my notes, I don't have the final cost for the cleaning bid, but I did.
I have it, if you want to, yeah.
Okay.
The final cost for the cleaning bid was one eighteen, six twenty. So that was the final contractual cost we got from ESS. And we were kind of looking back at some historical data too. And I think there were, in like FY twenty-one, we found it was, was it one oh one? A hundred and one thousand approximately, I believe, in FY twenty-one. Like the school year twenty twenty-one for Wiley when it was a school. And then we even looked like back in twenty-three when Wiley was last open, and it went down significantly, but then that was when we had to do an emergency contract. And so we were also kind of comparing it to some of the other elementary schools at that time, and it was around like ninety-three to ninety thousand for some of the other elementary schools back in FY twenty-three.
Yeah, some of the other buildings that we can compare it to, Thomas Paine in twenty-three, twenty-four was one hundred and nineteen thousand nine hundred and ninety, or ninety-eight dollars. And in the year before that, it was a hundred and, I'm sorry, the year after that is a hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars. So it went up about ten percent just in a year. We've kind of been seeing that with the, a lot of our cleaning stuff is, a lot of stuff's gone up about ten, twelve percent. Luckily, we're able, we were able to lock the contracted cleaners into the three-year deal, so next year their contracts are all up. I expect to see them jump significantly because of just cost and payroll, taxes, insurance, just everything for them is gonna, you know, has gone way up. So I know a couple of them have come to me and asked if, you know, can we renegotiate or something for this final year? And I'm like, oh, sorry, we have a contract that we have to go by, so. I actually thought one of them might even say they can't do it anymore, but they're doing it, so. That's just, like I said, the Thomas Paine numbers I gave you were for a similar-sized school to what the sixth grade center will be.
Yep.
About seventy-two thousand square feet.
Because remember, we added twenty-seventh thousand square feet from Wiley to sixth grade center?
Right.
So that is a big difference, yeah.
Any questions on that particular item?
So it's costing us like seventeen thousand dollars more to clean this building than if we had just replaced Wiley. About.
I, I think it's hard to look at because of COVID too, so like the, the years were very different. So like sequentially, it wasn't very consistent there for a while, especially when we added in that emergency contract year, it cut the price like in half. So it was hard to try to find like a, what was the number? And what did we anticipate the number being if we would have kept it online? Just because of inflation and then having that emergency contract, it seems like we got a pretty good deal that year, because it went from like a hundred and one thousand to like fifty-three thousand in one year. So it wasn't very consistent.
So the twenty.
The twenty twenty-one year was pretty high, and then it decreased drastically.
Last year that Wiley was.
It was open, open, correct, yeah, but it was different than some of the other elementary buildings, and it was so drastic from two years prior. So it was kind of hard to give a, a projection of what it would cost based off of those numbers.
I would also like to note that when this went out to bid this year for the sixth grade center, we did have two bids that were significantly lower than the one we had to accept. We had a bid of eighty-two thousand dollars and another one of ninety-nine thousand, six hundred dollars. And they were, they didn't follow the bid specs, so then we couldn't accept their bids. And I reached out to ESS. They were, they were the next closest bid. And they were at like a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, if I remember. And I asked them if they could look at their numbers and see if they'd come up with a, something a little bit better for us, so we didn't have to put it out to bid again and go through the whole process. And they came up with a hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars. And we had to do that kind of to give them a chance to get everybody staffed and get the supplies and stuff like that, so they could jump right into the building maybe as early as July to start cleaning some of the rooms that they, that become available to us.
And it really isn't accurate to compare the old Wiley with what we would have been cleaning, because even if we'd remodeled Wiley as an elementary, we would have added a gym. We would have added fine arts rooms, so we would have been adding square footage anyway when we brought the building to, you know, to the same level as the other elementary renovations. So there would have been cleaning costs increase anyway, just because we would have been adding square footage to that building as well.
Typically, do you like a gym in four classrooms, five classrooms, so?
Yep, the office would have needed significant updates because it was very, very small, so. Okay, and the last part of the update, and Scott, we probably don't need you for this part, but you're welcome to stay. Does anybody have any additional questions for Scott? Okay, thank you, Scott. The last, Angie had to step out. Her daughter is in the same concert that everybody else is running back and forth to the middle school for, is the staffing implication pieces and staffing update. So you guys received an email from Angie answering a few of Member Hickson's questions right before this meeting. So if you haven't read that, it's in your email right now. But Mary Ann and I are gonna kind of tag team and talk about the financial impact from staffing. So this is the exact same slide from May twenty twenty-four that we'd projected. Again, it's hard to know exactly how much something is gonna cost because as you can see, most of our new teacher figures were that sixty thousand dollar salary range. But in this situation, when, you know, we are a union and we have a collective bargaining agreement. But in this situation, when, you know, we are a union and we have a collective bargaining agreement, and so when new positions are posted, anybody can apply for them. And so we have had some veteran teachers who have applied to be at the Sixth Grade Center. And so their salaries, of course, because they are veteran teachers who have been in the district a really long time, are not going to be the same as a $60,000 new teacher would be. And so the trade-off is if a veteran person moved here, then that means if vacancy opened up someplace else, and we'll probably be getting a newer person into that position. So it is, it's really hard when you're projecting like that, when, you know, when you have a veteran, for instance, maybe we had a really experienced librarian who applied and has lots of years in the district, where they're going to make way more than $60,000. But their opening that they vacate in another building might have that new, have a new librarian who comes in and also makes that amount of money. So it is kind of a trade-off. And in this instance, we did have some veteran folks who applied for some of these positions. So we have some people who are not coming in at the $60,000 mark. But when we compare what we had last year to where we are, so we'll go to the next slide. So these are the actual positions. And again, just for the sake of, because a lot of people know who was here, and we want to protect the privacy of our teachers, that we didn't list their exact salaries, but we did put kind of what we budgeted. So as you can see, I think the first one that Member Hickson brought up in her email was the principal. So originally, we were going to have Mr. Cooper, or whoever was at the middle school would be the supervisor for both campuses. But the more that we talked about that related to teacher evaluations, having one person trying to go back and forth between buildings to evaluate staff, it became kind of problematic. We also, as we were preparing for the Sixth Grade Center and having conversations with ISB and with Skyward to talk about our new RC DTS codes and our new grading, how we, how we're going to put grades in, all the things that we needed to do logistically, it just became really apparent to us that one person could not supervise both of these campuses. So at that time, we were going to have a principal, a, at one point, we talked about having a building administrator and two deans. But then at the end of the year, we ended up with building administrator, assistant principal, and dean. And so that is where we are right now. The change is because we hired Imani Carr as the building administrator slash principal, her position was vacated, and another person was, is coming in for that role. And then we hired a new first-time AP for the role of the Sixth Grade Center. So a teacher who has many, many years of experience in our district is going to be stepping into the role as assistant principal here. We had already talked about having a building secretary, and that position is currently vacant. We have one person who is moving over from UMS to come to the Sixth Grade Center, which we'd already anticipated. We have a media tech position, which we have a new hire. We have a librarian position that is still vacant, but there is lots of interest from new and veteran people. We have PE, so we had two positions planned for the Sixth Grade Center. So we have a new hire there and a vacancy. General music, we have a new hire. You got, he was here today. Brandon is going to be actually general music slash choir, because Brandon has that skill set. So we're going to be able to get two for the price of one there, kind of, because Brandon's so awesome. We did not have intervention teacher. It was in one of our earlier postings, we had an intervention teacher. But when we ended in May of '24, we did not have that on the '24 FTE budget. But that is something that, based on the needs of the incoming fifth graders, transitioning from CKLA, which is our literacy ESL program, and transitioning into the Hoot Mifflin HMH, we really felt like we needed a intervention person here. So that is a position that is going to be here that is, was not on the '24 FTE list. Art, I think there was, in Jennifer's email, there was a question about art, thinking that we'd added more. The plan all along was to have three art FTE. So we had two at the middle school last year. We kept two at the seventh and eighth grade center. And our plan was to hire one for Sixth Grade Center, and that's what we have done. We had a tenured, longtime art teacher in the district who took that position. Dance and drama was a, a new elective that we were going to be offering at sixth grade. And that is going to be a new hire. It is a new hire, and they will be working with our, with Kara and this dance and drama teacher at the seventh and eighth grade building. They kind of have some continuity for the program. And then initially, we've talked about having a .5 nurse be added. And what we've done is, there has been some attrition within the nurse department, and we've met with Amy Marks, our district nurse. And so right now, the Sixth Grade Center is going to be covered through current staffing, and they, they're shifting around in who's traveling and who's doing what. So we will not be adding that .5 as we discussed in 2024. So that is a, basically because we didn't have the .5 nursing and we added the 1.0 intervention, it comes out to about a .5 FTE difference. And so that's the number that you see calculated over to the side. Mary Ann, anything that you wanted to add that I didn't?
I think you did a really good job. I'm here for questions.
I was going to look at Angie's notes that are in your email to see if there's anything.
Going through. I think you hit most of it.
Okay, perfect. Oh, I know one thing that we were going to address, because I've heard it, as I've heard lots of the other rumors floating around, is the additional staffing needed for grades five through 12 for the music department. So one of the thing, one of the reasons our Sixth Grade Center timeline was a little shorter than we expected is because we found out right as we finished design and all the work that we'd done, that the band and strings, fifth grade classes were really, really large. So we had to go back and increase the size of the band room in the Sixth Grade Center building to accommodate more bodies and more students. So the fact that that program has been growing, we were going to have to probably add, well, not probably, we would have been adding FTE to the music department anyway to accommodate just the growth across the board, I think, in grades five through 12. So we did add a band and a orchestra teacher, but that, those two positions are not going to be just at Sixth Grade Center. Those two positions are going to support the whole program through grades five through 12. So there were two additional music department adds, but that's for the whole department, not just for sixth grade.
I'll comment on the custodian.
Oh, yeah.
We had a, Wiley had a custodian, and when the, we decided to close down the building, we absorbed that custodian into our group of custodians and kind of had that person as a floater, or he went between the high school and middle school lot whenever they had extra events or needed extra support. That person just did that stuff until we got this building back up and going. So that person will just move over, that position, it won't be that person, but that position will just be moved over there. So we're not, we don't have to hire anybody new for that.
We had custodian on a really early projected list, but the one that we had from May 2024, there was no custodian because that person stayed with us, and we knew we'd be moving them back to Wiley once, back to the Sixth Grade Center from Wiley.
So the, the positions that were listed in the new position, you know, the hiring, there were five that were listed, Sixth Grade Center. There was a dance and drama, general music and choir, instrumental music, instrumental mus, uh, instrumental music strings, instrumental music band, and media tech. And only two were listed on the Sixth Grade Center costs. And you're saying that that's because?
So if you go back, John, to the May, this, the May 24 slide, is that this, I just copied this slide right out of that presentation from May 2024.
Yeah, no, what I mean, the, you gave us a list of people we're going to approve to hire?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
The personnel sheet.
The personnel sheet, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And there are five teachers on there listed as for the Sixth Grade Center, and they, they're listed as new position. And two of them are accounted for on this May 25 financial statement for the Sixth Grade Center.
Okay.
But three of them are not. And I, and that's because they're, they're going to not totally be at the Sixth Grade Center.
Yes, so that is the two addition. We were going to, Mr. Hicks actually asked for a third position as well. He asked for a choir teacher. So we kind of had the choir teacher on hold until we saw the elective numbers and how many students signed up for choir. And as you heard Kara Mariezy say, we need to do a little work in kind of growing our choir program at elementary level to get our choir numbers higher again at secondary. So we didn't post for that choir position because the, the numbers weren't, didn't warrant having a additional choir teacher added to the department, not just for the Sixth Grade Center. So yes, so the way Mr. Hicks does it is it is a huge puzzle piece. So these folks will only be coming to the Sixth Grade Center, and they'll both only teach two classes. So there'll be sixth grade, so for band, for instance, there'll be sixth grade band, beginning band, and sixth grade continuing band. And so the rest of the day, they're going to be doing something else. So they don't have a full teaching load, they're not going to be teaching seven or eight classes at the Sixth Grade Center. So they'll be, they'll have their two sixth grade. So the orchestra person will have sixth grade beginning orchestra and sixth grade continuing orchestra. And then the other part, times of the day, they might be at UMS doing orchestra or going back to fifth grade, doing fifth grade strings. So those addition, additional positions were for the department, not just for the Sixth Grade Center.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
I think the way we...
The paper said Sixth Grade Center, so that's why I asked.
Well, the way we have to do it to track the budgeting, for budgeting purposes and to track the FTE and the money, is we assign the person to whatever the posting was. So the posting was listed as a Sixth Grade Center posting when it was posted and when they interviewed. So this person, who I don't know who they are, Jacob Archie, was interviewed. And right, you see how it says middle school instrumental music teacher? But the FTE was, was generated as a new ad from, for the Sixth Grade Center. But that person's title is middle school instrumental music. So that means they will partly be at the Sixth Grade Center. They will probably be traveling over to the middle school as well. So those are the only positions that are really going to be true travelers, is the music folks. They're going to travel quite a bit.
And the salary for the principal, that wasn't listed in here?
So we can share that with you via email.
Well, I don't need to know the exact salary.
Well, because we...
No, that's personal.
We approved her a while ago.
I know, but, but it's not listed as part of the extra budget for the Sixth Grade Center?
I, I think that's because of the, so the assistant principal, that's what was originally included, that 90,000 was anticipated. But since Ms. Carr's coming, and that is the new position, and then my understanding is, is that the middle school is not going to have the same amount of FTE. So the middle, the AP is going to be at the Sixth Grade Center. But there's not going to be the additional FTE at the middle school now.
At the middle school, I understand.
It's not really an add. So really, the add is the principal.
Yes.
It really wasn't the AP.
Okay, okay. So this should really say principal here?
That's why we updated staffing. That's why we're saying, we're trying to say like all of it at once. So it's the current UMS AP slash principal is what we're trying to clarify into that little box over there.
Okay.
But it's, it's very hard. There's a lot of words over there, so, sorry. But that's what we're trying to convey through that. That really, we're anticipating the principal salary and not the AP salary in that.
Because the AP salary would have been Ms. Carr's salary currently. The FTE, the position, was already at the middle school, but that position now is being moved to the Sixth Grade Center.
Yeah, okay.
And that person is a very young, new administrator, so, yeah. So the salary will be comparable to that.
Well, I was asked a question about art, because an art teacher was moved from the high school, is what I was told, to the middle school. And there were some sadness, sad feelings about having to possibly cancel the upper-level art classes because of this. And that some people felt that this was because we, because we needed more art at the Sixth Grade Center, so therefore we moved somebody from the middle school to the Sixth Grade Center, so we moved somebody from the high school to the middle school.
So the plan all along was to have three art FTEs for sixth, seventh, and eighth. And so we have one as planned, and then two still at UMS.
Okay, and one was moved from the high school?
That wasn't to, that wasn't because of a, yeah, it was more of a reassignment to an opening at the middle school. So now we don't have to post for that opening. We have a person, experienced person from the high school who'll be there. We don't have to worry about having a long-term sub in that space, so.
But the, I do worry about the upper-level classes at the high school being curtailed. We've had, what I've been told is that we have had five students actually leave here and go study at the Art Institute in Chicago, which is actually at the School of Art and Design in Chicago.
That's true.
Quite an honor. And without those upper-level courses, you know, will we, will we be serving those students? So.
Great question. Anyone else? I mean, this is a huge commitment, both in terms of our capital budget and in terms of our operating budget. So that's important for us to have a transparent discussion and update on this. So I want to thank administration and Scott for putting all this together for us. One last opportunity to ask questions. Go ahead.
I don't have a question. I just hope that it will, we'll continue to have updates for our next meetings through June.
About the Sixth Grade Center?
Just not, it doesn't have to be just...
I don't know that we'll have much to add, other than, you mean, just pictures of the building or?
Yeah, just an update on how we're going in.
Sure.
Any, any concerns that we might have?
Okay.
Okay. Any successes?
I don't think the FTE will change very much. What you see here is what they're kind of doing in terms of hiring. But yeah, as we get more pictures, we can bring more pictures through the month of June.
Just an update through the progress.
Absolutely.
All right, that ends our administrative reports for the evening. We do have a set of action items. First up on our consent agenda are minutes from the March 25th District Parent Teacher Advisory Meeting, from the April 15th Business Meeting, from the April 29th Parent Teacher...
Hey, Paul.
I'm sorry.
You want me to do the summer?
I totally missed that. I jumped ahead. Thank you for correcting me. Yes, summer projects. There's a lot to do this summer. Thanks, Randy.
I provided a brief summary to the board of our objectives for the summer regarding the summer working cash and the O and M budget. In addition to the items that were provided to you guys, we'll also be addressing some of the stuff for our tenure plan. I'll just start with the adult education building, this building right here. We're possibly going to put a new roof on it for the cost of $215,000. Dr. Martin Luther King, we're looking at, we have a lighting issue on the north side. We have to repair that. And then possible heating and cooling upgrades. If you remember when the guys were here from GHR and they talked about the... If you remember when the guys were here from GHR and they talked about the, we have a chance to spend like thirty-five thousand dollars and get all that money back right away in cost savings. That's with GHR taking all the Ameren incentives directly to them. Otherwise it would be like a hundred and seventy or a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And so they're, they said they would be willing to take all the incentives and our cost would be thirty-five thousand dollars to do that upgrade. So that's something we're going to look into and see if it's still possible to get that done this summer. If not, we might look at doing it maybe over winter break or even the, whenever we can work it in. I don't think there has to be a shutdown for it, but I'm not sure exactly what the whole project will entail. At Dr. Preston Williams, we have to add closers to every door at a cost of, just a, a cost of materials was twenty thousand dollars. And then we're looking at doing some restroom upgrades for DPW and that would include like a different flooring, put an epoxy flooring over the old tile that's in there. A painting upgrade, go from that peachy color that's in there to something a little more updated. And then looking at the sinks, the sinks would not be included in that seventy-five thousand dollars. But we're looking at trying to do something with the sinks. At the facilities department, we have our cold storage building. That's been rotting away for the past, I don't know, quite a while. All the way around the edge of the building, at the bottom, you can, there's holes and critters are getting in there and causing a mess. First student, we have some window repairs to do. They asked for us to do some concrete work and I haven't been able to get with them to see what concrete work they were talking about. And then we will actually do some blacktop patching, seal coating, and striping. Lille Elementary, they are wanting a washer and dryer installed. They're wanting it installed in their basement, so it's going to be kind of, you wouldn't think it'd cost that much to install washer and dryer but by the time we have to run power and figure out where to get the hot water from, it's going to, the cost is, you know, significantly higher. We've got some plans to do some stuff to the, outside of the campus over there. I talked to the principal, assistant principal, and they've given us some ideas of what they'd like to see done this summer. And then there's also a room that they want to kind of change over there, so we're going to do that for them. Thomas Payne, not too much to do there, it's a newer building. We've already began adding some trees and then have to do some tuck pointing at door number two. In the library at Thomas Payne two, there's a exit sign that needs to go. There wasn't one put in there during construction and we just caught that this year. So we're going to have to, we'll install that and that'll be done in-house, so it won't be too costly. Early childhood, we've been talking to the principal down there about doing some playground upgrades. Working with a playground company right now that's offered us some significant discounts, especially if we, if we're able to do it in the winter. And then we've also, we have some concrete repairs to do over there. And we also want to do some work on the landscape over there as well. Urbana High School, flooring, Walk of Fame lighting. Currently there's can lights at the Walk of Fame, but over half of them are out. And we got a price to replace, replace the can lights and it was twenty-eight thousand dollars. So we're going to go with a much cheaper version of two thousand dollars and attach lights to the poles that will shine down onto the Walk of Fame plaques in due way with the two or three can lights that are working. We also have upgrades to the welding shop for a cost of seven thousand dollars. Urbana Middle School, we're going to replace the front entrance kiosk there at door one. And that'll include moving the metal detectors, new flooring. Something else there? I think Dr. Evie Tatum had some ideas for some signage and stuff around the, the front door area. And then we're also getting a new walk-in refrigerator and freezer for the food service for a hundred thousand dollars. Hundred seven thousand dollars, sorry. Yankee Ridge, we're going to plant some trees, maybe work on the landscaping a little bit. We do have a classroom addition going in to the library workroom. And I've got, just received all the numbers for that. And by the time we do the, the general contracted work and then plumbing, electrical, painting, flooring, we're, I think we're going to be right around a hundred thousand dollars for that project. We're in the process of converting the old stage, which was a storage area, into the library workroom. And that's the room that we're moving out of the library as their workroom. We've got that set up pretty nice, we're going to put a TV down there, a table and some chairs so they can go down there and have meetings if they want to. And the teachers can go down there and pull out their materials as needed from their literacy library. Also, down at the, down by the library, classroom four and five, the plumbing and the countertops in there are set up for the older kids. And we're going to change those over so they fit the kindergarten age kids. And that'll come in at about fifteen thousand dollars with cabinetry and plumbing, sinks and faucets and stuff. District-wide, we'll be cleaning and waxing all the gym floors, blacktop overlay and patching, seal coat and striping, concrete and curb repair, and then general painting and touch-up of all the buildings. So kind of a busy summer.
Yeah, it's a lot to do.
With moving all of the, the entire middle school. We'll be touching every room in there unfortunately, or fortunately. And then moving one-third of that building over to the sixth grade center.
That's a lot.
Any questions?
I have a question. The washer and dryer at Lille, so the, the PTA or somebody is buying the washer and dryer and
Yes.
and we're just installing it?
Yes.
I have to say, King School used to have a washer and dryer and it was wonderful for families, for students. I think that's a really good idea. And there had been an, a news item on one of the local channels about a local hot, school district. I don't know if it was Danville or, but they put a lawn, free laundromat in like the high school. And homeless students, parents could, I, I thought it was really a great idea. And I'm just saying, you know, something that we could think about because it's so helpful to families. And it's therefore helpful for the students' learning and for all the students in the building. Another question, I had sent you a message about not being, the community not being able to use the track this summer. And I did what you said and emailed.
Waller, Steve Waller.
And, but I haven't gotten any response, do you know? People have asked me if there were problems with the community using the track in the past. Or if there were ways to ameliorate whatever the problems were and allow some use.
So, are you going to read the?
I was looking, I was going to look for the email that he sent me.
Yeah, so he and I talked about it. And so what has happened is there has been extensive use from club teams and other schools coming over and using the track. And it has just caused more wear and tear on the track. And we've had, we have, it is time to redo the surface again. And having another spring of having uni and a U of I club. And there are about three clubs and teams that come over because it's public use. They'd already started calling and saying, hey, when is the public use time so we can start coming over and using your track? And when we don't have supervisors there, we'd had equipment being broken because our equipment sits on our track and we lock, when we lock the gates for our students to use. And because it's sitting there, those teams that were also coming over and using the tractor in public use time, they were also using our equipment. And so we also had a lot of wear and tear and loss of equipment last spring. So that was one of the issues. And I'm trying to remember what the, I think that was where the main thing is.
Yeah, just their way of skirting the rental fee.
Yeah, and just we don't have the funding to pay for supervisors to be out there after school hours.
We are also looking at, I just realized that you had this on the list. We are also looking at resurfacing the track this year.
Yeah, we do have to, it is up for resurfacing and we were afraid with the amount of use that it would get from these teams coming in because we don't have anyone there to supervise. So if we say public use time is from four to six, we don't have somebody there supervising to say to the club team, hey, sorry, you guys can't come, but the folks from the neighborhood, come on in and walk. And so that is, that was basically, that was basically it, is we need to, we need to resurface the track and the use that it would have taken, the beating it would have taken from all the teams coming over and using our, our free public track times would have really increased our costs when it's time to replace the surface and the equipment.
I think we have like sixty broken hurdles. And that's pretty much come from summer over the past, not just one year, it's multiple years, but-
Right, because the hurdles are accessible and they're out there. Not even just that, just the pit equip, just all, like our guys then are coming in and cleaning up behind people that are not our students. You know, when they have to come in and clean the track area and so.
We've even had years where people brought their bikes out there and rode bikes around the track, thinking it was okay to do that. Bikes aren't good for it.
No, no, that wouldn't be good. Have we thought about renting it to these teams?
It is available for rent. And that's their way of skirting around their rental fees by doing it during-
During the public time.
They open, they have their practices during this time. They, they plan their practices for that purpose only.
So they've been planning practice time for our public use hours, so, and not paying rental fees.
We should look into that.
Yep.
Well, thanks for that update. Any other questions?
What about using like the pathway at Thomas Payne for the, the walking?
The Sandy Cooper Memorial Walkway, yeah, in the back.
Yeah, we purposely made that as close to a quarter mile as what we could so the, they could keep track of their lapses like students went around or whatever, but yeah, they could go there and use that.
That's a good idea, Lizzy, yeah.
Are they putting a fence up though to block that? Because I've seen like stuff up, or is that just to keep them away from the trees that were planted?
No, that's the admin from the building asked us to try to put up some sort of barrier to keep the kids from running. If they could see like a temporary wall there, they thought they would stop from going all the way over to play in the trees or to just go play out further into grass. So we put up a kind of a rope fence, is what they asked for. So that's what's there right now. I don't think it's, where the rope, where the fence is currently, where they have us put it, we wouldn't be able to put up a fence there because it would block off the track. So we would have to go on the, the walk path. So I'd like, if we do ever do that, I'd like to go on the backside of the walk path. And they think that's too much area for them to have to run. That's why that, we've seen that ropes, stakes and some concrete barriers and some rope.
We also have the wellness center where residents can go and walk there. So that's a great option that we haven't had before.
Anyone else? Thanks so much, Randy, we've got a lot to do this summer.
Very busy.
That is our last administrative report for this evening. Next up are our action items. First on the consent agenda are our minutes for the March twenty-fifth district parent teacher advisory meeting, the April fifteenth business meeting, the April twenty-ninth district parent teacher advisory meeting, the May sixth study session. Eleven dot two are our bills and checks, education fund bills for one point seven million dollars, operation maintenance fund bills for two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, transportation fund bills for two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, working cash bonds for two point three million dollars, school facility occupancy tax for a hundred and eight thousand dollars, tort for forty-nine thousand dollars, life safety levy for forty-six thousand dollars, payroll salary and benefits for four point eight million dollars, and Urbana adult education for a hundred and two thousand dollars. There is a long list of personal items in our packet that's typical for this time of year. That needs to be approved by the board. Eleven dot four is an administrative personal item that also needs to be approved by the board. Eleven dot five are interfund loans. So we're moving a loan from working cash to transportation to, for the amount of four hundred thousand dollars and working cash to IMRF for two hundred thousand dollars. And lastly, there's a resolution authorizing the proper disposal or sale of property. These are library books from Lille and Yankee Ridge, multicultural variety of technology, laptops, all-in-one desktop computers, hard drives, tablets, and Chromebooks, a two thousand and two Mazda six-two-six, a two thousand and seven Blue Lacrosse, wide variety of curriculum materials at Gerber and grades one through five, and second step SCL kits. Does anybody wish to have any one of these items on our consent agenda moved off of the consent agenda? If not, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the entire consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any further comments or discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Hickson?
Yes.
Member Amarabu?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Langendorf, yes. Vice President Baxley?
Yes.
President Plowski?
Yes. First up are our individual, next up are individual, individual action items. I am stumbling tonight. First up are our gifts. Rosemary Buck from Urbana donated a hundred dollars to Urbana Adult Education. Ann Hoops and Sarah Flesner donated through Champaign Urbana School Foundation eleven thousand one hundred and seventy-two dollars for new marching band percussion instruments. Donation was in the memory of Richard Cognell. Is there a motion to accept the gifts and send out appropriate thank yous?
So moved.
Second.
Any further comments or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Twelve dot two is fiscal year twenty-six salary allocation for non-union sports staff administrators. So this is, this happens every year. We traditionally give a raise to our administrators and non-union staff that is akin to the raises that are contractually obligated to UEA. That's typically what we do every given year. I believe that the increase this year is going to be around four hundred thousand, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Yeah, oh no, sorry. It's three hundred and fifty dollars from the ed fund and sixty-six thousand from O and M fund would cover the, the, the cost. The whole thing or what? So the, 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 the total is around four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, but three hundred and fifty if it comes from the ed fund, sixty-six thousand comes from O and M fund. So like, it's probably for our, our, the people who work in operation maintenance are, are going to be budgeted from that, that pool of money. No, nothing to apologize for, I kind of stumbled through it. Is there a motion to, is there a motion for the floor?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved to second, are there questions, comments, discussion?
I have a comment, and that is our teachers and their sal, we generally tie these salary, the salaries to the four percent or three percent that the teachers are getting. But the teachers do not all get three percent or four percent. The, the teachers who have been with the district the longest and have the highest salaries usually do not get the full three or four percent. They get less. And teachers at the lower end get a little more. And I think when we discussed this last year, I thought that that should be done with, I don't know if you call it all, all the central office people also. I don't know if that was ever discussed, but I mean, three or four percent- Um, I don't know if that was ever discussed, but I mean, uh, three or four percent is a lot bigger, of a big number is a lot more money than three or four, four percent of a smaller number. And, um, I s-, I'm gonna say it, I don't know if it's too late to do that now, but I think that in the future, we should be looking at that. We don't have a lot of money.
CPI this year, right now, is two point nine percent. So a three percent raise is basically giving our administrators a cost of living increase, which everybody in the country deserves and should get.
Yeah. The way it's implemented in, at least in past years, is, is, it isn't, uh, across the board, three percent increase for every employee. It's, it's an increase in the budget allocation that the, that the superintendent then can, uh, apply to meet market rates for certain classes and employees to refer to certain individuals as well.
Across the board, everybody's getting this.
Correct.
It's, it's, it's. Cool money that's been allocated.
Yeah. And, and, and administration gives discretion, um, to apply that, but not to exceed the budget.
So that number is, that number is figured, is going to be figured off of the average increase of three percent, which is just barely over CPI right now.
Right. So it'll be three percent based on total salary of adding all the salaries of all the people together. And then some people will get more than three percent and some people will get less than three percent. Is that, I mean.
I don't, I don't know if I'm following the question. I'm sorry. So will you repeat it again? What, you want the three hundred and fifty?
What I'm saying is, if you, if, okay, I'm somebody working and I'm making, um, sixty thousand dollars a year. Sherry's working and she's making a hundred thousand dollars a year. My three percent is much less than Sherry's three percent. And that is kind of how the teacher's contract generally works. There is a, a three or four percent raise, but not everybody across all of those cells gets the three or four percent. The people at the higher end generally get a, a lower percent and the people at, at the lower end generally get, I would think, a little bit higher percent. I haven't looked.
It varies from contract to contract a lot. But, I mean, in gen-, in, in general, what you're saying is true, that the, the, the lower salary people get, typically would get a higher percentage than the higher salary people, but that's not always the case. Sometimes it depends.
No, it goes.
Sometimes it depends on the individual stuff that's being taken too.
That's exactly right.
It's very complicated and on.
That's exactly right. But, um, what I'm saying is, my question was, the three percent is based on the adding all of the salaries together. And then you say, okay, um, we've got X pot of money based on three percent of a million dollars. I don't know what it is, but three percent of a million dollars.
The three hundred and fifty thousand came from me taking the ed fund and saying, applying, you know, the three or four percent based off of what category that person's in. That would be an approximate amount for that pot of money. That is a correct statement. So, but if, but then Dr. Ivory Tatum would go in, is that what you're asking? And then Dr. Ivory Tatum can go in and say, this person's getting three percent, but this person's getting a three point five percent. Is that your question? Based off of that pot of money?
Is that what's happening?
Yes. So basically, when we negotiate the contract with our union, we have, um, steps one through whatever it might be. And if, when we negotiate that contract, we make a decision, do we want to pay the first ten steps more because we want our salaries to be more on par with districts around us? Um, and I believe this time, um, we also wanted to take care of the people in the middle because we wanted to, um, make sure that we were retaining high-quality staff. And for the last, um, contractor too, we'd put the majority of those increases at the top, um, at the, you know, step one, step two, step three, to get us up to a higher starting salary raise. So the same thing happens on the, when you look at the range for the teachers, their inequities across, sure. So we have teachers, we have teachers in our district who make as much as administrators because they've been in the district for a long time. And they make a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, or they make, you know, ninety-nine thousand dollars. So we have teachers that are at that level as well. So we up, we have to make decisions, um, when we're looking at the salary schedule in a negotiation cycle and say, where do we, where do we need to get the most bang for our buck? Do we need to be increasing our salary to keep, to in, to attract people? Um, because for instance, Champagne, increase, they're going to be negotiating before us, which is unfortunately always the case. So they're going to be negotiating right now and have a new starting salary, um, whereas we won't start negotiations until October, November. So we always are looking at where can we start our, you know, first year, second year, third year. So we do the same thing. So even though it's an, um, average increase for teachers of four point four-five, that four point four-five might look different if you're in the first ten years, or if you're in your middle years, or if you're at the higher, higher end. So.
Jennifer, do you care if I chime in with something too?
Yeah.
Okay. So just to give some context, since we have some new board members too. Um, typically the admin raises follow what we give the teachers, the average rate, but we also recognize that we want to be able to make sure that we have money, um, left over. The past two annual raises for administrators in unit four was four point five percent. And so with our teachers at the four point, um, close to four point five, and then administrators being at the three percent is pretty close to CPI. With the, um, the contract, we can't, we can't give our support staff more than that, two point eight-seven, um, because that's what was negotiated. But for those of you who are around at the first year of the contract, it was a very large percentage increase for our first year for support staff. Paul, do you remember what that increase was? I thought it was sixteen percent, which was a big raise. And so, that's why it seems very small. And Jennifer, I understand what you're saying. Like our people that make the least amount of money, that three percent doesn't mean a whole lot. I get it. But right now that, um, you know, most people, i- if they know that they can go to unit four, uh, an administrator and get paid more over there for doing the same work, like Dr. Ivory Tatum or, or somebody else, right? Um, and then if we were not to offer raises for our administrators for their work, and then they know that somebody across the street's giving a four point five raise, it just puts us in a bad situation to retain our administrators as well.
Which is also, just to piggyback off of that, which is why we're doing a three percent for administrators and a four percent for support staff. Because we know that the support staff are coming in lower than our administrators already. So there is a lot of conversation about how to be equitable and still retain, still retain staff.
Can be good steward, so.
Yeah. We also have something that was added to the contract, uh, two negotiations ago, and it, it kind of addresses your point too, Jennifer, um, about this, the teachers that have been in the district the longest, maybe that their raise percentage isn't as high. But they can enter into the MOA three, which is the District Retirement Enhancement Program. And if they give us notice for four years, if they tell us when they're, we're gonna retire, um, for four years, they get a constant raise of five point two-five percent. And that's real dollars. I mean, all of it's real dollars. I guess I shouldn't say that, but anyways, so. It's hard. I get it.
This was a great discussion. Um, any other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Langendorf, yes. Vice President Baxley?
Yes.
President Palowski?
Yes.
Member Hickson?
Yes.
Member Amar-, Amarabu?
Yes.
Motion passes. Uh, twelve, twelve dot three is a recommendation for insurance consultant change. Angie, can you provide context for the board?
Sure. Talking about making sure our staff have more money, this feeds well into twelve point three. And so I'm welcoming our friend, Jason Jared from USI, and he's brought other friends with him, Katie and Terrish, um, to propose something to the board to give more money back to our staff members in terms of insurance premiums. So for several years, to give some more context, and it might even be decades, um, Jennifer and Sherry might have more of a timeline on this. The Urbana School District utilized Tom Brown as the insurance consultant to negotiate health insurance costs with various providers like Health, Health Alliance, Blue Cross Blue Shield, et cetera. He also helped enroll staff members into insurance plans that best suited their needs and possibly their family's needs. And he'd also provide guidance and insight to the school district's insurance committee. A few years ago, Tom Brown retired and he sold his business, which was Brown Hobbs McMurray, to an insurance broker, consultant company, um, named Gallagher. For the past few years, we've worked with the insurance consultants at Gallagher. We do not pay Gallagher directly. Their insurance consultant fees are incorporated into the health insurance costs, which are then passed on to our staff members. We currently use USI as our broker for other insurance needs for the district, which includes workers' compensation claims, property, casualty, auto, cyber, pollution, school board legal, et cetera. And so, um, as an insurance committee, um, we've been looking for the best insurance at the best price, um, to recruit and retain our staff members. The insurance committee is recommending a change to work with USI as our insurance consultant effective July first, twenty twenty-five. As a side note, the fees are lower than those of Gallagher and we believe the quality of service will be better. So on behalf of the insurance committee, I'm, um, one of the co-chairs, Sharon Foley is the other co-chair and UAA rep. We asked the board to approve the change from Gallagher to USI. We would be working with Jason Jared, Katie Walls and Terrish Ca-, Catchings. And Jason and Jared would be the lead who's at the podium right now, should you have additional questions.
First to the board, I would need a motion from the floor to begin discussion.
I move to, uh, open the floor for a discussion on insurance control.
Move, move, yeah, so the requirement would be to, to move, uh, make a motion to approve the, the change and then, if there's, if, once the motion's on the floor officially, then we can, then we can discuss it.
Gotcha. So, I move to, say it again now, please.
Just say so moved.
So moved.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Okay, now we can, we can, we can discussion, ask questions. Any, anybody have a, has a question for, for Angie or for, uh, for Gallagher? Oh, sorry, for USI, sorry. Any questions? No? Okay. Then a roll call vote would be in order.
Did you have, did you?
No, I just, so there would be more, yeah. Vice President Baxley?
Yes.
President Palowski?
Yes.
Member Hickson?
Yes.
Member Amarabu? Yes. Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Langendorf, yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, guys.
All right. Well, thanks for coming. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Uh, there is no future special or executive meeting scheduled, so it's our time for our superintendent's report.
Put a piece of potato in my mouth.
Sorry.
Okay. Um, so John, I don't know, can you pull that, was that, were you able to play that little video? Yep. So today we did our very first grad walk. And, this is, oh, you don't have sound. I wish you had sound so you could hear all the kids in the. It's the idea. So we stopped at every elementary school, just let it play, John, and I'll keep talking. We stopped at every elementary. We had sixty-three students signed up, but then I think when they woke up and saw that it might thunderstorm, they got, they rolled over and didn't get out of bed since they're all done with all their requirements as seniors. Um, and so, pause it, John. Oh, you can't pause it. This was the cutest thing ever. So that young man went to Thomas Paine, Jackie Martin met him in the hallway and had the students do whatever the little TP pledge was and the song and just for him. It was so cute. Um, but, and then if you go back, we actually stopped at Wiley because, um, at, for the sixth grade center for the students who had been at Wiley. Um, and they got out, out of the bus and we stopped and they put up their Wiley W's. So it was really sweet. Um, they really wanted to do that, so we accommodated that. And this is a clip of, um, a second grade class at Yankee Ridge. Um, the Yankee Ridge students made posters. And so, um, our young folks had posters that they had, um, to take back with them from Yankee Ridge. And then, um, the class made a special little, we're so proud of you video that we put at the end of this. So this was just our first time doing this. I've wanted to do it for a really long time, but it was, um, really appropriate to do it as we kick off our strategic plan and our portrait of a graduate. Um, and the, I just saw, you saw when they were going through the hallways at DPW, just how everyone's faces were lighting up and um, they had their own phones out, kind of videoing on their own. And, um, so it was just really a great experience for them. They felt really special. And I heard a lot of the teachers as we were walking through saying, that's gonna be you one day. And, you know, and just having those conversations with them. We even went to early childhood. We didn't know if we'd make it. But Ms. Madigan said, you can't be this close to Dr. Williams and not come over. And we had time, so we went over and we even walked, um, the hallways for the three, four and five-year-olds. And so several of the students had attended early childhood when it was on Broadway. And, um, they were saying, we've never been in this building. It's so cool. And so that was really, um, really nice. So you can flip to the slideshow now, John. So this is Ms. Jackson. Her son is a senior this year, so they got a special little picture. So, um, so yeah, we afterwards, um, if you go back to the, yep, so here are four Wiley students. They put their W's up and, um, we stopped at the middle school. We didn't walk around the middle school. It just takes, that building is just so big. Um, but we talked about it with the group and they felt like if there's a way we can, um, do it next year, they really do want to walk around UMS. Um, and so, it was, yeah, it was, it was a really great experience. Mr. Guzman and I already have lots of ideas for next year to make it even, even better and bigger. Um, so, um, member Langendorf has already talked about our amazing honors night. Um, we had almost eighty students recognized, including our forty-six for syllable literacy. Um, I counted in the program, so when my boys were there, we had about two pages of scholarships and awards. And when I sat down and I opened up the program, it was four pages of scholarships and awards and recognitions. Yes, it was, yeah, over two hours. It was amazing. And so, um, these are just a few, few pictures, but um, just to see the nu-, just the amazingness of our young people. And as Sherry said, um, you know, we have two people who are recognized, um, Michael Turner, our former student ambassador for getting a full ride from the Cameron Impact Award. And then Jalen Johnson, who was just, you just saw her walking through the halls at Dr. Williams. She was a, uh, Dr. Williams student, um, who got a full ride twice, um, through the Quest Bridge program. So just hearing about all the wonder, wonderful things that our young people are doing and the awards from the departments and the athletic awards, it was just a really great night. So we're, we're doing some amazing things. We should be really proud of our, of our kiddos. Um, and then next is we also celebrate, this is all about end of the year celebrations, so our retirees. So, um, you can see the, the two hundred and thirty-seven years of service for twelve retirees. They don't always come to the dinner. So this was the group who came to the dinner. So you can see, we have a couple people, long lifers from central office who are retiring. Um, we have some maintenance staff and custodial folks who are gonna, Ken retired a little earlier, but, um, Billy Young from UMS who we're really gonna miss. Um, I don't know what we're gonna do at UMS without Billy, but we'll get by. We have some related service folks, um, social works, uh, speech language pathologists, um, ESL teacher, early childhood teacher, English teacher, Mr. Kuplinsky's retiring from UMS. They, they recognized him. I went to the UMS staff meeting yesterday and they recognized him. And, um, then Felicia Freeman, who teaches our CNA program at Adult Ed. So, um, and early childhood teacher. So really wide range, but it is nice to see, I told Paul, twelve is a great number because, you know, right around COVID, we had way more people retiring because of, it was just really hard. Um, so to see that number go down and not be in the twenties is great. That means, you know, we have people who are staying a little longer and, um, hopefully are satisfied and happy with the work they're doing in the district. But, um, we also want to make sure we always recognize our folks. These, some of these people have spent their whole careers in Urbana, haven't worked anywhere else. And that says a lot, so. Angie, you don't know, you want to say anything about that? Anything else about retirees? Nope? Yes? Okay? Yes, yes. Linda Corbin's leaving. We're all sad about that. Um lots of history. So today, um I was over at Phillips with our executive interns. So Ms. Rosser is here on the left side. So this is an amazing program and um something that we do that is just um really special to Urbana. So this picture has our students plus their intern um placement folks that they work with. So we had students at Prairie Research Institute, Habitat, Carl Orthopedics and Sports Medicine. We had a law firm, um Tummelson, Byron and Knox. Um we have uh people who are wanting to go into business. So the Chamber of Commerce had one of our interns, Christie, um someone at Solagracia, Spurlock Museum, Baldurato. So one of our young people is, has been working at Baldurato. So these were the fourteen. Um and it is just a really great program. I did wanna give a plug. Ms. Rosser said today, next year we are needing STEM, film and law placements the most. So if you know someone, um or you know a business owner who is really interested in partnering with the district, she usually gets the interest from the students and just goes in the community and matches people up. So um it's a great way to celebrate their um, just their senior year and going off into their careers in college, so. And then lastly, lots of dates. So we heard about the Adult Ed graduation is tomorrow night. Um UHS graduation on Thursday. Um we also, Tiger Academy um does a celebration for the students, um kind of something special for them here. So they have their recognitions for their Tiger Academy grads from high school and um eighth grade promotion. And then all of our fifth grade promotions, um UMS eighth grade promotion is May twenty ninth at ten. If you're planning to attend and you've not let us know, please do, because they definitely hold spaces um for board members at UMS. And then the Gerber graduation um at one um is on May twenty ninth. So that is it for the superintendent update.
All right, thank you. Um there were a series of FOIA requests that were published in our agenda that were completed. The chair would then entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Enjoy graduations, everybody, and we'll see you in two weeks.